I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Roat?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Dr. Sally?
Here.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Good evening. Item number one, Green Team presentation.
Can we have the smart board on?
You know how to, I don't know how to use it, does somebody know how to use it? Jordan?
Let me see.
You should have a class. Yeah.
So we have, uh, is there anything?
I don't know.
From those on the here.
All right.
We are so glad you're here.
Yeah. I'll stand up here and I'll slide for you.
Okay. Thanks.
Can everybody see this?
Yeah. Can you see what? Can you see Mary here? Can you see Mary here?
Okay, before we start on that, let me just tune our horn a little bit. Some of you may know, some of you may not know, so for those who may not know, we did achieve-
When you're talking to the mic, please.
We did achieve the mayor's request to get bronze certification for the Green Team, so we did accomplish that. And after bronze, there's silver and gold, so we're hoping that, you know, we'll be able to continue working. So I'd like to thank the Green Team, there's a lot of members here tonight, thanks for coming out. And also Roberto, who was a big help. And, you know, any of you who we contacted for information, you know, we leaned a lot on the BTW. And there is a master plan coming up for the city for 2020, a renewal. And the Green Team has spoken about this at our meetings. And we're hoping that we can help introduce sustainability elements into the master plan. I appreciate some suggestions as to how we, you know, it's best to pursue that, you know, whether we should, you know, write up some suggestions or, you know, you want to post questions to us or what, but, you know, we think it's something we can make a contribution on. And, you know, hopefully we can do that along with the Environmental Commission. Most of the Green Team has become acquainted with this. And Rose Wittes was very kind to give me an evening of her busy schedule, so I-
It's my pleasure.
You know, I acquainted her with it. And also, I took some of the questions that came out of various meetings I had, either with the Green Team or with the Environmental Commission, and spoke to two people. One is the Chair of the Environmental Commission in Maplewood, and Maplewood is one of the towns that has an aggregation contract with five other towns, neighboring towns. So his name, and he'd be glad to come here if there's any additional information that, you know, you don't hear tonight. His name is Rob McCoy. And there was also an energy consultant who I reached out to by the name of Bob Chilton. He's with Gable, which is a company that several of the North Jersey towns use. We're not under any obligation to go with him or talk to him at all, but I, you know, just needed somebody that I could ask some technical questions to, because another question that was raised was, it was sort of an objection. The city is already in a contract for, I think it's two years, for their energy supply, their electric energy. And is it fair to ask residents to enter into a contract such as aggregated energy if the municipality itself isn't involved? So I brought that to Bob Chilton, the energy consultant, and he said as a matter of fact, they are not put together. Municipalities that want to do this, do it on their, do it separately. And what I'll be talking to you about tonight is for residents and businesses, okay? So this is a big bulky name of renewable government energy aggregation, which applies to electric only, electric energy aggregation. It's also known as community choice aggregation, which is a little friendlier name to call it by. So what is it? It's a sustainable Jersey action, and it's for towns such as ours to make renewable energy available to residents and businesses. Yeah, I was going to do that. Hold them for a sec. Who are, you know, interested in making renewable energy available to residents and businesses and communities that has leaders, fortunately such as those we have here, who are interested in sustainability. So I have packets for each of you. Jordan, you want to make sure you've got a case one? On the right side, you can follow along with the PowerPoint. On the left side are some documents that you can look at a little bit more at your leisure, because then you require a little more study. So what are the benefits of this? Why should we bother? Well, it allows municipalities to act on behalf of their residents, to purchase electricity, residents and businesses as well, and get a better price, and get a higher percentage of renewables. We currently, JCPN L and, well, JCPN L and the one in North Jersey are asked to provide up to 20% of their energy as renewable. They are currently not meeting that standard. If that standard is 20%, they're now supplying somewhere in the neighborhood of 11%. So if the town chooses to pursue this, we would be able to get a higher percentage, higher than, you know, 11, hopefully, you know, closer to 20%, but we'll see. And there are also, excuse me, multiple layers of consumer protection that are built into this. Aggregated energy is established by law in New Jersey. And the final, on your left side of your packet, is a readout of all of Sustainable Jersey's information on this program. And it has a link to the law, should anyone want to look at that. So this is also overseen by the Board of Public Utilities, as well as our own municipal Our own municipal attorney, who of course would have, you know, an important role in contracting and the RFP, all of the stages of this. Yeah, this page is, can acquaint you with the towns in New Jersey that have already pursued this. These towns are currently under contract. This whole process from start to finish can run anywhere from 18 months to two years. So these that represent cities under contract means that they started basically two years ago to be able to have a contract now. And Red Bank is the one town in, and I just learned that Eden Town is also looking into this. I don't know how far either of them have gone, but they are pursuing it. And, you know, fortunately, they're in the JCPN L area such as we are.
Eden Town had it previously?
They had it.
They were in the agreement. At the expiration of the agreement, we, Gable Associates was our energy agent. They handled all of this process. And the, we went out to bid, and the bids did not come back with significant enough savings to make it worth going into. I think we went through three rebids, and the numbers still didn't come back competitive enough as compared to the rate to compare from JCPN L. They did the whole program. I don't know if they've gone back out for bids again.
When was that?
Probably three or four years ago. Was the initial.
Oh, well, hopefully the market is a little, a little more amenable. Yeah.
Bob Chilton was the representative that we dealt with.
He was. Were you satisfied with him?
Yeah, they were very good.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, I saw that several of the towns chose, and I'm not sure what went into choosing him, you know, well, the RFP.
We solicited proposals from different providers, from different companies, and they were the one that we selected.
Yeah. Yeah, again, I'm sure any of these towns, if you, you know, would like to hear their, their experience, we'd be, I'd be glad to put you in touch with them, or I could get in touch with them. Yeah, next up, on the left side of your packet, there's a national map. It's under the black where all the cities are. The next page. That's there just to give you an idea nationally of what's happening regarding renewable energy. These are towns that have either committed or are already there. Of course, they're probably, the ones that are already there are probably, you know, smaller towns, but, you know, there are some towns that are already there. Okay, next up. Okay, this is a sustainable Jersey action, and those of us who have worked with sustainable Jersey, first thing we ask is how many points, how many points do you get? Well, for the two things, a town would need to accomplish two things to gain five points, the initial five points. One is pass an ordinance, and on the left side of your packet, there's a template of an ordinance that Sustainable Jersey provides. Take it or leave it, but, you know, they try to make it as easy as possible. And doing the ordinance and engaging an energy consultant through an RFP process. So once those two things are done, you get the five points and you keep those. And if, when you get a contract, if you have a higher percentage, I think it's 10% above what JCPN L is doing, or 20% higher, you get additional points. So at the outset, you're guaranteed five for embarking on the process. So the importance of the ordinance is that it authorizes the establishment of an RGVA program, as well as, you know, notifying residents and businesses that this is going on in town on their behalf. So the first step about hiring an energy consultant is, this is an important fact, the energy consultant is engaged at no cost to the town. It's the energy supplier pays commission to the energy consultant. So his job is, it's a big one, he guides the municipality through the entire process, and, you know, maybe you have some experience with this? How effective he was in-
They were, they were good.
Helping the town.
They did a very good job. And just to speak to that, when you talk about how they make their revenue, it comes out of the awarding of the contract, they get it through the fees.
And just supply.
And Mr. Chilton, to his credit, dissuaded the council on at least two or three occasions, there were savings that could have been realized, but they weren't significant enough. Had we gone with it, he gets paid, but he really did look out for the best interests of the town.
Oh.
But the driving force behind my experience with it was for savings, it wasn't about renewability. So you're coming at it from a different perspective, you're saying.
Oh. Well, we're expecting to, to realize both.
Right.
Of course, you know, not too many people want to pay more for renewable energy. Some of us may, but, you know, I mean, you can't offer that to, you know, residents and their all income levels in this town, so, you know, it has to come with a savings, otherwise it's, you know, it's not, it's not doable. And of course, the increased renewability, sustainability. So he will guide the municipality through all the various stages and, you know, advise the town as to what's, you know, the best, best deal. And I'm glad to hear he protects the town from not, not good deals, not the most favorable deals yet. And managing the logistics. So, yeah, the logistics are, are many, and, you know, we expect the town to, you know, have to be dealing with, with all the things that go on. He's, takes charge of getting mailings out to the residents and businesses in the town and lets them know that they are enrolled automatically. There's an opt-out feature, so that anyone who does not wish to participate, you know, they can opt out, and they can opt out at any time, and there's no charge for opting He conducts, he maintains contact with the opt-ins and the opt-outs, because people are going to, you know, be moving and changing their mind at various stages through the contract term, and, you know, he'll, he'll manage that. Also provides a customer call-in center, so if anyone has any questions or questions about billing or is confused about something, there will be a number to call, you know, where they can, residents and businesses can get answers to their questions. Okay, from a resident's point of view, what's the benefit? Well, they have protections through the law that governs this. There's an opt-out feature, so there's under no obligation to be a part of this. And as I said earlier, they can opt out at any time, no cost, and written notices do go out to all the residents and businesses notifying them of the, of the process. And it's the New Jersey law that requires that there be the opt-out feature. Okay? So that's not negotiable. They, people will be able to get out of it if they, if they want to. And residents, if they already have an agreement with a third-party supplier of their own and want to stay with that supplier, they can. But if they want to opt out at a future time, they can do that also. So I'm going to go over some of the most frequently asked questions. You can ask more questions, you know, at the conclusion, but these are the most frequently asked. How much will it cost? It's not going to cost anything, the energy consultant is paid by the supplier. What happens if the price or terms that are offered at the end of the bidding period aren't better than what we have now? Well, we're under no obligation to enter into a contract. We can wait until a better rate comes along and engage then. What happens during storms and other power outages, which we know we have those here, don't we? The JCPN L continues to maintain maintenance of the lines and repair of the lines, so that continues. It's not the third-party supplier that assumes responsibility for that. So just remember, it's just the energy source that's changing, everything else is remaining the same. What if I would rather stay with the current provider? You may. You just may. You can do that. No, there's no obligation. What happens at the end of the aggregation contract? At the end of the contract, you can, if the rate remains favorable, you can roll it over into a new contract, which would have an additional opt-out period of time at the beginning. And if the rate, for some reason, is not favorable, you know, you can just end, end the contract and let it lapse. Will being in the aggregation impact my ability to participate in programs or provide a utility? People get smart thermostats and, I don't know, all sorts of special deals through their utility company, and those remain in place. This will not have any impact on your ability to, you know, get a smart thermostat or whatever the JCPN L is offering. If I'm on a balanced billing plan, then how will the aggregation impact my billing? People who have a balanced billing plan retain their balanced billing plan, that continues, because it's JCPN L that continues to do the billing. So that remains. And that's the end of my 16-minute presentation. Oh, just one more thing. Price of renewables is, remember this, is steadily decreasing. It's now cheaper than fossil fuel and will continue to drop, and capacity is increasing exponentially. The last two pages I just selected, one is Gable. JCP, Sustainable Jersey has on their last document, more than you can imagine, lists of energy consultants. Gable is one, and Good Energy, I think, is another. There's one more. Jordan, that's, Good Energy is another. There are many, many, so there's no shortage of them. So just one more thing, I also took this up with the Environmental Commission, and a couple of members had reservations or questions. In principle, several of them were, in principle, supportive of the town looking into, into this, which is pretty much what we're asking, you know, for the town to look into.
Yeah, I was at the Environmental Commission, and they, you know, would like to get more information on it.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, there are people, you know, who have the experience from the other towns, and, you know, Bob from Maplewood. And the fact that five towns in Essex County joined together is like amazing to me, given administrative differences and all. If Lowbridge is interested, it may be possible to partner with another like town, and the bigger the volume, the better the rate, so, you know, it's something to, to entertain. And, you know, I'm sure the energy consultants would be available too, if, you know, we wanted to invite them, one of them, any of them, to come, you know, come and argue.
I think that would be important, so, you know, we'd all have the same understanding of what the problem's about. I think it, I mean, it's, looks good to, you know, to me personally, to work against something like that.
Any questions, any other questions?
How many points do we need to reach silver?
Oh. Do you know that off the top of your head?
I know. I believe maybe five as of currently. But I mean, as you can see, it's, they add up pretty easily with how many are available. I believe total, there's about 124 actions that we can complete, so this is just one of them. Energy is something that the Green Team wanted to focus on as of this year. There are several sub-actions that we could work with, but this is one that's pretty attainable as well, and something that, that the town overall.
There are also-
One fifty, you get to the bronze, is that what?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, currently at one eighty.
And how many do you need to get to silver?
Two seventy-five.
And it's, to get to silver and gold, it's not simply points. There are certain actions that pretty much do have to do with energy, energy efficiency, renewable energy, you know, there are municipal actions, community actions, there's, you know, multiple actions that, you know, the Green Team can choose from. But in order to get silver, some of those energy actions are required, so they want you to move in that direction.
I would be asking, at the end of your contract, you decide not to go, what are the endgame offers? And so you automatically go back to JCPN L? Do you need something in written or automatically go back to JCPN L?
I'm not sure, but, you know, I can ask that question.
If the contract with the municipality expires, everyone automatically flips back to JCPN L.
Without no written sometime, okay.
Mike, is this similar to what we have for dominating the company with the library? What was, what's the name of that company?
In this case, we have, I mean-
You know what I mean, no?
We do, like, the auction for gas and electric. It's really not the same.
It's, it is kind of different, we're kind of-
I, I was getting at is the consultant, right? I mean, is that consultant functioning similar to what, you know?
Kind of sounds like, similar, but under different-
The way, the way they do it, we had public information sessions, that they came in and made the presentation to the mayor and council, we had residents attend. The big, one of the big objections of residents is the council making this decision for them. It's an opt-out program, it's not opt-in for the residents. So if they don't have a third-party provider already, they're automatically put in. However, and I had many, many phone calls from people I knew, there is a savings. The town doesn't get any revenue out of this. The residents do get a savings, or you don't wear the contract. But people, they were skeptical, because that's the world we live in, they said, well, you know, there's got to be a catch. The program worked very well, and people that already had third-party providers, some of them switched over, because the savings is better, because I have third-party provider, but I'm not in an aggregation program. They can get a bigger savings because you're doing it because of the volume. So it is a good program. The one that we did was focused just on savings, it was to get the lowest rate, to save money for the residents. There were options that were available with renewable energy, the savings weren't as great. So in this instance, as long as you still get savings, I think people would probably be happy with it. However, if you don't have the renewable at that time, now maybe it's changed, because availability has changed, the savings were not as good. The other concern that people had was, what if the rate to compare, the JCPN L rate somehow plunges, and we're locked into a two-year contract, and it goes low? Nobody wants to be stuck with the rate above the JCPN L. They can still opt out, but they probably wouldn't be aware of it, because they don't market, bother the market on a daily basis, so that was another issue. I do believe that when we went out for the, the contract that never materialized, because the numbers weren't good enough, there was a provision about that, a protection, but all those things come at a price. So, you know, when, when the companies, when the, the energy providers are going to bid, if you want them to put that protection in, it may affect your rate.
Oh, okay.
But Mr. Chilton is really well versed in this, he knows this is his, this is his business, he was great. They were very good on getting public information out. Once the contract is awarded, all of the calls went through the actual energy provider, not Gable Associates. It was a company here in New Jersey, they handled all the phone calls and all the opt-outs. So people do get frustrated, they can't get an answer quick enough. You hope you have a good provider that's attentive to the residents' calls. You hope you have a good provider that's attentive to the residents' calls.
So from, from your experience, George, lessons learned, or what would you advise?
Once you get, if you can get people past, they don't like having decisions made for them. You're making the decision for them. And in this instance, I looked at the sample resolution, or its resolution ordinance. The commercial is opt-in only, it says. We had no commercial people engaged. Lots of businesses already have a third-party provider. The municipality can't participate. So there was a lot of objection to the concept of you, as a governing body, making that decision for the consumer. However, it really is a savings to them, and it's better than what they can get on an individual basis. It's getting past people's fears. But it's all regulated through the PPU. There's, and again, the consultant gets all their revenue directly from the rates through the energy provider. So the municipality doesn't have to pay.
So if they already have a third-party provider as a resident, they won't be automatically included. They only automatically include JCPN L customers. So if you have someone with a third-party contract, if they want to get a better savings, if it is a better savings, they have to get out of that agreement and then ask to be put in this one.
Could I make a comment about that imposition part of it? Where, I'm Enes Stangl, I'm a resident of Long Branch. I'm a member of the Green Team. There is already an imposition. We're imposed to get JCPN L, and then we can go to a third party. So the state is already regulating this market. So imposition is there already. We can't go and contract with that North Jersey company. We're stuck with JCPN L. So imposition is there. Valid argument.
So when we compare these savings, we're comparing them to JCPN L. We're not comparing to any third-party.
No. What, what this is, they're requiring a third-party provider for all the residents that would be involved. The rate to compare is the JCPN L.
Because it might be a third-party out there about the same thing, and that people are not grabbing it. Like you said, they don't want nobody making...
Right, but on individual basis, I don't know that you're going to go find, you can go on and look them up. You're going to get a penny savings. We had a nineteen percent savings for the residents when we did our first contract. You couldn't get that on an individual basis off the web. It just wasn't available. It's the buying power, again, because of the volume. You're putting thousands of accounts into one well. And like they did, you had several municipalities that did it together.
Yeah, yeah.
But education's a big part of this, that people get over the skepticism, and the fact that you're deciding for them.
So how long does a consultant stay on to, you know, to manage the project over time?
From the time he's retained till the contract ends.
It's a permanent position as long as, as long as the contract's in.
Right, right, because he establishes a call center for consumers to call, so, you know, he's in it for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I was just kind of interested too, in like the broader picture for the Green Team of, you know, like what are some of the other things that you're thinking about as, you know, we're looking to go to the next level for sustainable, just some of the projects?
Well, as I mentioned, the, you know, the master plan and sustainability, especially with the development that's going on on Lower Broadway, you know, you know, to whatever extent we can include sustainability and, you know, renewable, you know, kinds of projects there. Jordan's been looking at brownfields and has an inventory of brownfields separating out the privately owned from the city.
So chiefly, what the Green Team as a whole and Sustainable Jersey, which we're trying to, you know, achieve higher levels of certification, like Annette said, only certain actions are, you have to complete certain actions to get gold status. Of course, we want to get gold, because there's only, Woodbridge Township is the only gold-certified town within the state. What you need is all of the energy actions and all of the waste actions on top of a three-hundred-and-fifty-point cap. So underneath waste, so we're trying to break those down. We can do that, you know, over a few period, a few years period. So first, we're going to look at energy, since that's one, that one's a little considered. And then under waste, which will go into totally re-looking at our waste stream and how we're utilizing, you know, the various funding out in the area. So what we're, that's, mainly, we're focusing on energy this year, as well as continuing all of the previous projects that we've been working on since last year. Certain points for, through the Sustainable Jersey model, will lapse over a period of time. We currently have three community initiatives that we need to show that on a yearly basis, we are compounding upon. So we have the revitalization of Jackson Woods. We have the community composting project. And then we also have the restoration of the Lake Taconasse Whale Pond Brook watershed. So on top of compounding all of those, we're working on these other various actions to get to that next point cap.
So I'm just sticking with the idea of the master plan a little bit, and I, I don't know enough about the master plan, and I'm not sure who, who to direct this to. But like, that whole issue of sustainability is, how, how, how does that factor in? And is there a conversation, for example, to be, to be had? You know, I know we're going to have our public meetings and everything, but is there a conversation to be had now that that would be a priority for, for this, I'm going to actually help with that answer?
From the Environmental Commission's perspective, and especially from my perspective as a scientist on the Environmental Commission, there are lots of elements of the Sustainable Jersey Plan that Jordan laid out. But we are a shore town, and if carbon emissions aren't part of the conversation, we are basically climate deniers. And climate deniers are going to make a lot of money, are not going to make money in our real estate. It's, we have to have clean energy in the mix, and sooner rather than later. So Sustainable Jersey as a, as a, as a plan is a great plan, but it's going to be unsustainable if we can't get our carbon footprint down. So there's big letter of sustainability on Sustainable Jersey, and then there's small letter of sustainability. And small letter sustainability is entirely predicated in the next thirty years on getting our carbon footprint down. And that's one of the reasons why, I mean, there was discussion in the Environmental Commission about the details of this project, but the Environmental Commission is behind getting more renewables in the mix. And I kind of echo my fellow citizens' point. I would really like it, as a citizen, JCPN L, if the default was more renewable energy.
Yeah, and that reminds me of EV charging stations. That's another thing we've begun looking at. There are grants for that, you know, to introduce EV charging stations into a town, maybe into the municipal building, you know, complex area here, or, you know, possibly in another location. You know, I don't know, but I know there are grants available for it.
So, so I guess my, my question and the point I'm trying to make is, it, it really ties into the vision of Long Branch, you know, three, five years down the road. And, you know, how do, how do we make sure that there is enough, you know, that this has its opportunity for input and consideration and everything? This isn't just another presentation. There's a lot of...
I agree.
...potential, you know, to this. So that, that's my point of how, how that happens now, how this continues, so it doesn't get lost as we're looking at the master plan and Long Branch.
All the different things.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody has an answer to that, but this, to me, it's like, this is another presentation.
Do you want to entertain next steps? Would you like to hear from either, you know, one of the consultants or from Bob McCoy, who's a, a chair of an environmental commission that has done this with five towns?
We should, we should look into it. I think we should look into the next steps of the program. Speak with the consultant and go from there.
You, like, vote on that in executive, or?
We can take consensus, right?
What, what exactly, where are we voting?
We're not voting, we're, like, yeah. You know, what are the next steps? Are the, the next steps, we'll, we'll, we'll speak to the consultants if they want to.
Do we need to go to consensus on that?
Excuse me, if I may. I, I remember Annette and I discussing certain steps, and I thought the first part of this was to have a resolution by the city that by 2050, we would like to have fully renewable source energy. So I'm thinking that would be the first step.
Well, we're, I, it starts, yeah, ordinance is required.
I thought it was a resolution.
It's not an ordinance.
But I would like, I would like to get more information from the consultant, before we even, you know, do anything.
And maybe I can also, somebody can forward to me exactly what it is that you, you know, we, we just say, are we going to vote tonight? Are we going to do something? Are we going to put an ordinance on? I'd like to know what it is that we're, exactly what it is that we're talking about, so maybe people, somebody can send me what it is that they would like us to adopt, and we can go through the process of taking a look at it, vet it, and certainly get the council.
Okay, so, we, I'll speak to your information before we move forward.
Would you like me to put you in touch? I'm not sure who the appropriate person is.
Put him, put him in touch with the mayor and city chairman.
Yeah, well, okay.
I, I'll speak with both the Gable Energy Consultant, and, you know, I assume he could be available and put him in touch with you, and also...
Steve knows me. Steve knows me, knows how to get his, from Gable Associates, right? Mr. Gable, I know very well.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I spoke with Bob Schel, Shelton. All right, and then there's the gentleman from the Environmental Commission, Maplewood.
Do you want, I can forward some information that I have in the packet.
Yeah, Jordan was mentioning waste, and something I learned in, I worked on the recycling and waste reduction part, something that Sustainable Jersey is interested in, that's hard for Long Branch to show. We keep accumulation numbers, but it's, it's difficult to compare one, one year to another and one substance to another. And what Sustainable Jersey looks for is a reduction in waste collection and an increase in recyclables. So that sort of inverse relationship that shows you have a robust recycling program that's actually resulting in lower waste going into a landfill. So that's been a little hard to establish, you know, because they want data.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm scheduling the 2020 Council meeting.
So you want to go ahead and change April eighth? Council begins on that day, so you can do Thursday the ninth? Everybody's available for that day? Good with that one?
So it'll be on a Thursday instead of a Wednesday?
Thursday the ninth, right. And then the next one is in November, November eleventh, city halls close that day. You can do the twelfth, the next day, on Thursday? Good with that? And then... Right, twenty-fifth is the day before Thanksgiving, so we could do Tuesday the twenty-fourth?
That's fine.
Good? And then December twenty-third, the day before Christmas Eve, we could do it on the twenty-second, like we're doing this here? Good? Tuesday the twenty-second?
Tuesday twenty-second, okay.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Board of things, can you come? Mario?
Yes, planning board. Planning board, we've been, we have no meeting this month because of the league of, league of municipalities. So we changed it to the second of the month coming ahead. So we have two planning board meetings, the second and the seventh. And we have no major products going on right now, just minor subdivisions. So we have more than...
Thank you.
I attended the environmental commission, and they're working on new projects. They're also began working on their second Trex bench, and they're doing a great job.
The second one?
The Trex bench. They're...
Oh, 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 the Trex, okay. Yeah, yeah, great.
And so they're doing a great job of, you know, collecting, and they were talking about where to put the first bench and how to create less spend in the park. And they're talking about cars, that's, 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 that, you know, where they're fishing that. And working very, very hard. I mentioned to them that, you know, we'll be introducing...
Excuse me, sir?
Tree conservation ordinance.
Can we take, can we take the, can we take the couch? Thank you.
And, you know, since they're here tonight, I'd like to thank them personally for all your hard work, you know, everything that you're doing. We're also, you know, wanting to know when we're going to, you know, work on the advanced plastic and all that. I think we're also getting, we want to, like, push that further along as, you know, as soon as possible. And we were talking about the watering stations as well. I think there's going to be more water stations in Long Branch. You know, we refill the bottles, and they'll have coolers on them, so they're, you're not going to get hot water when you fill the bottle. So, but, thank you both for being here and working so hard for us. We appreciate it.
So, so the ordinance, the plastic bag ordinance, I drafted some time back, so maybe it's appropriate. I circulated it to everybody. Can we circulate it again, and maybe we should just get it on again, get it on a workshop agenda and move forward?
That would be great.
So I'll, I'll recirculate it again.
Good, thank you.
You're on.
And I spoke with Nick, and he's going to introduce the tree conservation ordinance.
Good, he has it too, good.
Yeah.
And just, you know, the brewery is supporting the Trex bench.
For Long Branch?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's great. That's good to hear.
They're with you, yeah. So that'll be good.
That is good.
Yes, thank you.
And you?
So, the Cable Commission didn't have a meeting, really didn't have a forum. The, I spoke with Kevin, who is the chair, and he just mentioned that the mayor you, you might be working with, he asked me to mention that you might be working with Mamet, a man that's... So, you know, there, this, this committee struggles with, with quarrels and meetings, so I don't know if there's at any point that we start looking at that, but in any case, that's the status of that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and, and I just wanted to ask too, I mean, I know that this isn't a board. I don't know if there's any opportunity for an update on hears, if that's inappropriate, just say it's inappropriate.
The Long Branch University, ten...
The Melissa University Task Force will meet on the first of December. And I will tell you that the safety and the insurance meeting will be on the fifth of the sixth on Friday morning. I think, oh, the senior center will have the coffee and with the mayor on December eighteenth. It is the senior center. I have the opportunity to tell you. I hope some of you can come.
It's in the middle of the day, right?
Yes, it is, lunchtime.
Yeah.
About eleven-thirty.
I pray for rain.
Yeah.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. I met with Derek, Derek Turner, Stan's right hand. I regard to Department of Public Works. And good, good, it wasn't a long meeting, but I just met to see how morale is and how things are going down with the Department of Public Works. And I'm just happy to say that everything is running smooth. They, they really have no complaints and they thank us for, when there is an issue or something, that we respond in a timely manner. So I understand Stan is home and is recovering nicely. That's good. Thank you. Item four, review of the regular meeting agenda. Okay.
I just wanted to ask about the cabanas. And I know, I know we've talked about this.
About what?
About the cabanas. And, and which, in terms of the number of cabanas, which we kind of go back to the number of times, is there any way that we could get more? And the method of sales, if we could facilitate that in any way? Because it sounds, sounds like, I don't, I don't know, I don't know who to look after this. It's, it, I know at one point it had to be in person, but it, you can submit...
Renewals, I don't think have to be in person.
Okay.
Open availability has to be in person on a first, first serve basis.
Yeah.
I don't know. Stan is intending to end that work about us.
Oh, wonderful.
He's talked to you about getting to the budget.
Yeah.
I spoke to him today.
Great, good.
Do you know where they're gonna be placed or?
Yep. Five at the Great Lawn area and five at Cottage.
Wonderful.
That's, that's his plans now.
Good, good. Yeah. Okay, we'll go with that. We'll go with the method of payment. We're making progress, so that's, that's good.
Counselor Nocelli? Okay. I need a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So I need a motion to adopt a resolution to go into executive session for the following items. Contract negotiations, grant writing, union contract updates, motion to report, and item number two, personnel matters.
Second.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yeah.
Doctor Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Danlop?
Yes.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.